Started. Okay, so it's just past one thirty and I'm gonna call this budget meeting to order. Everyone just take their seats. We do have a quorum and first item is to accept the motion for an adoption of the agenda. Thank you, Mayor West. Okay, any discussion there? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? I see none. Okay. We have no delegations and we can go right into our scheduled business. The first item is the Village of Richmond Hill Business Improvement Area. And we have a presentation by Nicole Moore. Nicole is the Manager of Marketing and Events for the Village of Richmond Hill Business Improvement Area. You have up to twenty minutes to present to council. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. On behalf of myself and the Village of Richmond Hill Business Improvement Area, I'd just like to introduce Sina Aknavan, who is our Treasurer, and also the BIA Bear, who is our mascot. Unfortunately, Penny, our Chair, could not be here today. She is sick, so I will move forward and hopefully I will not mess this up. Can you hear me okay? Oh, you wanna see the bear? I will proceed. All right, so I just as a refresher, I know that council is aware of who we are, but I'm not so sure the public, who may be watching online or at a later date, is. So we are the Village of Richmond Hill Business Improvement Area, and our main mandates are to improve, beautify, and maintain the municipality-owned lands, buildings, and structures in the area beyond the beautification and maintain this at the expense of the local or regional municipality. Promote the area as a business shopping and entertainment area, so also as a tourist destination for all Richmond Hill residents, as well as visitors in the area, and do it according to municipal law. Where we are located, it's the historic downtown Richmond Hill. So it starts at Young and Major Mackenzie and goes north to Young and Crosby. On the east, Benson Avenue on the west, one block east and one block west. And it is where our wonderful Village of Richmond Hill began over a hundred and fifty years ago. Who are the BIA members? Well, we have property owners and we have business owners. Both of them pay a tax levy to fund the BIA's activities, and anybody that is in a commercially taxed building, once they're assessed, can be a BIA member in that area. Our current membership is over eighty buildings in the district and over a hundred and seventy businesses on our website. I say on our website because there's more than that. I just have to go door to door to get the rest online. Last year, this year, actually, some of our highlights, we started this Shop Local campaign in December twenty twenty-three and brought it into January twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, and we had twenty-eight business participated. We were also honored this year to have host a roundtable discussion with Retschi Valdez, the Federal Minister of Small Business, and had several business members, as well as board members, City Economic Development, the Members of Parliament for Richmond Hill, in cover notes, enjoying a coffee and a chat about small businesses' challenges in the area. And those are some of the ones that we discussed. We are fortunate enough to get a Canada Summer Jobs Grant for the second year in a row, and this year our summer student helped us significantly with creating all those fabulous social media videos that were online this summer. We did a raffle at Live in the Plaza, and she was responsible for also taking all of the information and all the data that we collected and logging it and creating social media posts for it. And she also helped with our events. One of the things that the BIA does is try and share the economic development things that are happening in the city and in York region online, as well as with the Richmond Hill residents. Marketing promotions is huge with the BIA. And basically, it's promoting the area, the community events that are happening in the BIA. We do this online on our social media, as well as through the e-newsletter, as there is always a lot of activities happening downtown Richmond Hill. Here are two examples of the Shop Local posts that we did, our Beach Ritty series campaign in the summer of twenty twenty-four. And for International Women's Day in March twenty twenty-four, we spoke with female entrepreneurs in the BIA and got their advice and insights and shared that online. People can follow us at Facebook, Instagram, or Twitter, or sign up for their email newsletter. We were so excited. We got five hundred followers on Facebook this year, and we're getting close to fifteen hundred on Instagram. Uh-oh. Lots of events happen in the BIA. Some are hosted by us, and one of them is our cleanup in the village in April, and this year we had Spooky Village, which is a trick or treat, so a whole bunch of trick-or-treaters down in the village. Over eighteen businesses participated, and lots of kids and parents enjoyed themselves. Our next event that's happening in partnership with the Richmond Hill Center for the Performing Arts Theater is giving away hot chocolate and candy canes before the show on December sixteenth, so. These are photos of our lights and spooky village. We also participate in city events. So this year it was Doors Open in May, and we had BIA volunteers on the street to guide people to the five locations that were near the village. We also participated by having a booth at the Art Walk, and this year we had a photo booth, so anybody that could attend could take pictures and share them online. We continue to sponsor the theater as part of Live in the Plaza, and this year we asked raffle questions of everybody that attended. And I can't really read those here, but I do know one of them is, are you a dog, cat, or another person, another animal? One child told me they were a human person, which I kind of liked that response. And we got a lot of statistics as well on to find out how people, what people were doing in the village. We also participate in local community events. The Richmond Hill Winter Carnival is there, the Remembrance Day Ceremony and Parade, as well as city council-hosted events, and as the Mayor's Maple Syrup Festival. And this year, we are trying to connect BIA businesses with any other city councillors. So Golden Taekwondo Academy had a demonstration at Deputy Mayor Chan's Spring Fair in May. So our goals and ideas for twenty twenty-five, they're pretty well similar to twenty twenty-four. Having our events and participating in the city events, we are exploring whether or not we have a Nauru's event in March, and continue to share economic development ideas for future entrepreneurs or our entrepreneurs, as well as setting up coffee networking chats with the BIA business members to fully foster community in the Business Improvement Area. And I will share our budget for twenty twenty-five proposal and hand it over to Sina to highlight the areas for that.
Hello, councillors and Mayor. I would like you, I would like to present the twenty twenty-five budget for BIA. We are requesting five thousand dollars for our local and major events expenses. We are requesting six thousand three hundred for BIA meeting expenses. And we are requesting office and general expenses, five thousand two hundred. Office rent and utilities, thirty-one thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. For marketing, sixty-five thousand one hundred and fifty. Professional service fee of ten thousand seven hundred. Employee salaries of fifty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty, which is going to be the total of hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred and forty-two, forty dollars. Now, we are subsidizing this budget from our reserve fund. And we are requesting a hundred and twenty thousand dollars as the tax levy. Now, if you have any question, I'll be happy to explain more.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. That's great. That's always good to see what the BIA is up to. We all know that you're very active, and I just remind the members of the Budget Committee, the request being made is not, not for Richmond Hill property tax dollars, that we, we give them permission to go out and, and levy their businesses. So that's, that's what they're requesting to levy the businesses, and so, yep, the budget's pretty straightforward. I'll just bring it to committee for any questions. Counselor Davidson, go ahead.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your presentation. I, I know you folks spend a lot of your own time in volunteering, doing these things, so thank you. I do have a question. Why just some of these numbers are double from before? Why is meeting costs twice almost is what it was or projected to be twice as much as it is this year? And events? Can you, do you apply for some of the community grants that exist here for groups that do things for the community, which at this point I think is up to five thousand anyway? Do you apply for those?
For local and major events, I don't believe we have requested any grant, but for other areas, yes, we have. Regarding the increase, we had an increase of ten thousand, roughly around ten thousand dollars. And they were it came about from buying new licenses for our computers and office and hiring an extra help to Nicole as we're expanding in our marketing and events activities.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Okay, so I asked two questions at once. So the first question, I guess I'm asking staff, is the BIA eligible to apply for some of the community grants that the city offers?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, the BIA would be eligible, provided they are submitting for an eligible project and eligible expenses.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I would suggest you give it a whirl, because you do do a lot for the community in that way. It's something that the city can support you with. And the other thing was the meeting. So this was more meeting hardware, not that the space was a problem? The increased costs in meeting, in meetings, there was, I mean, it was more with a one-time purchase of equipment rather than meetings are gonna cost you over six thousand dollars a year?
It's, if you, yeah, if you, if you, we also submitted a very granular budget sheet. It's mostly come from software licenses, like we are, we have, we are moving to Office three sixty-five. We tried to also join the city to go through their licensing fees, but that didn't work out, so we purchased our own licensing fee and/or be paying for Zoom. Those kind of things is, it's going to be a yearly expense for us. And also, we have hired note takers for our meeting to keep the meeting minutes. So these things has, has increased our, our budget.
Thank you.
Financially, just one more. We are going to QuickBooks Online, so that we streamline the finances of the BIA, so that staff can spend more time on event execution. So that is a license that we will be incurring in twenty twenty-five. It has not happened yet for twenty twenty-four, so that will be an annual cost as well.
Thank you. I'm through you, Mr. Chair. So for the public's benefit, what what kind of support do you folks get from the local businesses? How many people come to you or are part of it? Just a ballpark figure for, it's mostly the village, right? The main downtown Richmond Hill. So can you just offer some, some idea of how, what, what, how you support local businesses?
One of the things I said in the presentation was sharing the information that we have from economic development, not just at the city, but also the Ontario BIA Association, what the region has, so sharing that online as well, and connecting our business owners with the city resources, like from a development project. We've got new businesses coming into the village all the time. So it is just the village that I support and work with, but trying to share it online as well, so that any entrepreneur, anybody that wants to come to Richmond Hill and open up their business here, gets the information they need. If they wanna do it in the village, I am happy to talk to them and hopefully find them the space. But if we don't have the space, it's, it's in everybody's best interest to be in Richmond Hill.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Chan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the two delegates and the observer who hasn't spoken a word yet. No, I don't think he will. But thank you very much for the presentation. And Chair, as you said, this is really something that the BIA, if you're members, business member, who have come to, I guess, in a sense, agreement, because I was at your AGM Annual General Meeting, so in fact, just want to confirm for you, Mr. Chair, from the delegate, the budget as presented has already been approved by the BIA Board. Is that correct, through you, Mr. Chair?
Through the chair, yes.
Okay. So, so it's not really for council or Budget Committee to say, man, 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 go back and we do it. So just want to be clear. I appreciate that, because I was at the BIA. It does went through all the open, transparent, you know, democratic process, any organization, a lot of directors. Now, I appreciate a recap of what happened in twenty twenty-four and looking for in twenty twenty-five. And appreciate, Counselor Davidson, is that, you know, for businesses, in a sense, that paying money, you buy, what are you doing for them? And one aspect maybe is not highlighted, maybe you're thinking about it. I also see our Economic Development Director, Irois, here, to the extent that it may be in the coming year, that think about, there may be a session. I'm sure our Economic Development team more than happy to share with businesses there, particularly if our Community Improvement Grant Program, that actually, one of the target is, and I saw our director nodding at the back, is for businesses on that Young Street Heritage Village. I wanna be clear, I never call it downtown. I call it Heritage Village. Downtown is yet to come. But having said that, would that be something that be contemplated with this budget, through Mr. Chair?
Through the chair, absolutely. The, the, I know the CIP program is very important, and I am sure that there are businesses and property owners that are not aware of that particular program. So I certainly think that would be something that we could look into organizing, whether it's an online session as getting many of our businesses together in one room with, as they're busy trying to run their businesses, is a challenge, but certainly.
Thank you. Yeah, because I'm just thinking about making more connection and in a sense, our co-nuncle benefits for members than, you know, get exposed to, maybe they know about it already, but if particular session dedicated, it kind of heightens their attention. Ah, the city does offer, if you want to expand, Winaway and wherever, on the Heritage Village on Young Street. So something to keep in mind. Now, one aspect I'm thinking about moving forward and looking forward, and I'm glad that you turned to cultural celebration of the Persian New Year, the Ruz in March and so on. Now, one of the things I'm not quite sure BIA members may be, or board, directors aware, the city would be having a co-nuncle cultural center at the Opos Office. So because I hear the word tourism, destination, so think about expanding in terms of cultural things in the year two, two five. Thank you very much for being here, and thank you always be a very active supporter for having a vibrant business environment in Richmond Hill, not just in this Heritage Village, but all for the city. So, Mr. Chair, or do you need a motion? Or we just received the presentation, or actually accept, accepting recommendation A and B, as recommended in the staff or should we do it later?
Hoping someone will move the staff recommendations.
And I would be happy to move it.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
Put that on the floor. The next speaker is Mayor West.
Thank you. I'll just keep this very brief. We're really here today just to talk about the, the budget. But I will say that I, I think that the BIA in the last few years has been doing a good, a really great job. I mean, I think the BIA has always, you know, worked very hard to make sure that the downtown is, is, you know, doing as well as it can do and, and doing better and, and moving the ball forward. But the last few years, I think we've seen better progress than we've seen in the years before that, and I think that that's a really great thing. So Nicole and Sina, thank you very much for the work you do and continue to do in that regard. I think this budget is very reasonable, and I think it'll help to support all of the different things that the BIA members, the businesses that are in that downtown core, know what they need, and, and they, they know what they need to do to support the business environment in that downtown area, and this budget reflects exactly that. So thank you very much for being here. Thank you for the work that you're doing. I, I will say, you know, I, I have noticed in the last little while, the, the the range, the variety, and the quality of the restaurants that are happening in the, in the village core has stepped up. And I've gone to a number of those restaurants in the last little while. I live not too far from there, so it's very convenient when, when things are hungry in the West household. And there really are some great restaurants down there, and I think that, you know, with the help of the marketing that the BIA is doing, which again is reflected through this budget, you know, the public is gonna start to know that more and more and more, and I think that's great. And, you know, I, I want to say it's always great to see you guys here, and, and it's great to see the bear, which I understand still doesn't have a name?
He doesn't have a name, but in twenty twenty-five, wait for it, follow our social media, because we are holding an election.
Okay.
We have several names picked out. I just have to be able to get ballot boxes into all the businesses, and we'll be online. Please do not vote twice.
Okay.
I do not.
I'm, I'm gonna put forward BIA Zynga, Biazynga. Okay?
Through the chair, respectively, Mayor West, there were opportunities to contribute to the name.
And I, and I missed it?
And you missed the deadline, so.
Okay. All right, let's, let's keep the discussion to the topic at hand, so thank you very much and keep up the good work.
Okay. Thank you. And I, I don't see any of the speakers. I just have one question myself. With regards to the, the reserve funds, you, you're drawing down pretty significantly to keep your levy lower, I suppose. Are you confident you're still healthy with, with your reserves and so you can, you know, manage the BIA long term?
Yes, Mr. Chair, yes.
Okay.
Should be okay, yeah.
Good, good. Just always concerned about that. You don't make any yearly contributions. How was your reserve fund originally created? Did it, or?
There was, when we took over the, in, like personally, when we were appointed to be BIA member, it was, there was a mutual fund that we received. Before that, we, we don't know how it was, but then that mutual fund eventually become, became our, our reserve fund.
Okay, very good. So, yeah, that's, you know, it's, it's significant amount, and it, it's great that you're getting, you know, the, the annual dollars you are with, with the lowered contribution from your members, so. Got a motion on the floor for the staff recommendations. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, it carries unanimously. Thank, thank you very much. The next is Scheduled Business Five Point Two, the Richmond Hill Library Board Budget, and we have a presentation from Mona Shah Nazari, the Board Chair, and Bruce Gorman, the Chief Executive Officer. You have up to twenty minutes. Don't feel obligated to use it all, but you're certainly welcome to.
Good afternoon, members of council and the Budget Committee. My name is Mona Shah Nazari, and I am the Chair of the Richmond Hill Public Library Board. As a passionate advocate for and voracious user of our library system, I thank you, each of you, for the privilege to be here this afternoon to provide highlights of our accomplishments in twenty twenty-four and to speak to our twenty twenty-five operating budget. Twenty twenty-four has been another excellent year for us. We introduced our Library of Things collection, providing unique and useful items for our patrons to experience. Short on a bundt cake pan for your holiday baking? Need some gardening equipment? Yes, at the library. By the way, these items all have holds, so don't wait too long to put in your request. We installed our express branches and are preparing to launch them in two of our community centers, Edsack Field and Elgin West, further supporting our growing and thriving communities throughout Richmond Hill. Our new online catalog and app were also launched this year, resulting in a tangibly improved customer experience. Just ask my eleven-year-old whose weekly forays onto the new books page on the RHPL website results in impatient anticipation of that weekend's library visit. All of this to say, in twenty twenty-four, we have solidly supported our tagline, yes, at the library. The Richmond Hill Public Library Board holds our fiduciary responsibility to our community in highest regard, and through our Finance Committee have provided oversight during all stages of the twenty twenty-five budget process. Over the course of deliberations, RHPL staff worked closely with the city to present a responsible budget that allows us to continue to innovate, to provide innovative programs and services that Richmond Hill residents have come to expect from us in a financially responsible manner. We look forward to another great year for our library system in twenty twenty-five, as it continues to serve as an anchor of joy and connection across our great city. And with that, I am pleased to hand the presentation over to our CEO, Bruce Gorman, for further details.
Thank you very much, Mona. I don't know how I followed that. Nicely done. So welcome to me, to this community. Let me say first, thank you so much for the warm reception I received from everybody. The ELT group through the Sydney Manager and all of the group has been very forthcoming and helpful to me. Our board, as well as the staff of the library, the mayor as well. We had a nice breakfast not so long ago. So I'm gonna talk about libraries and our budget. The clicker has a delay, and I will use every minute of the twenty, I imagine. There we go. Did someone do that, or did I do that? Did I? Okay, it's late. Okay, so libraries are, you know, I've been doing this for a long time, and libraries are, are the greatest places. Our relevance continues every day. We're more important to communities than we've ever been. In a selfish manner, I think libraries are the absolute best partners of cities. I look forward to working with the city on mutual initiatives that, that continue to make the library a fabulous place. I really can't say enough good about it. This is a quote of the day that, that I've been using recently, and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna speak it out because I think it's really fabulous. Libraries are essential to Canada's value proposition of an inclusive and prosperous country. They are the heart of every community, open to everyone, providing connections and experiences essential to our economic opportunities, equity, and to democracy. They are the, they are essential to social cohesion and the healthy functioning of modern life. I mean, the things that go on at libraries are remarkable every day, and that's a good summation of it. Let's, let's talk about why people love us as, as well. People love us. People use us all the time. I'll use two quick examples. Ninety-three percent, this is based on our Customer Satisfaction Survey that we did. 93%, this is based on our customer satisfaction survey that we did recently. 93% would recommend Richmond Hill Public Library Defense and Family. 89 agree that staff are welcoming, knowledgeable and provide quality service. A couple quotes there. Touch this gently. There we go. Just two that I'm going to read. Richmond Hill Public Library has been an incredible community resource for me as a high school student, which is fabulous, the high school kids we're getting as well. I've been going to the library for years. I know that staff, I know the staff very well and they know me. They always ask about my family and where in society, I'm sure there's a few other places, but not that many places when you go in the public domain and someone asks about your family, right? It just doesn't happen. It's a warm and friendly place for everybody. And that's just exactly what I'm saying. So I'm going to go through a few of our audiences. This is just scratching the surface and tell you a little bit about them and then I'll get into some of the highlights for 2024 and our look forward to 2025. So children, when I talk about children, I talk about a lot play. There's been so much research done on how important play is to little kids and what a great place to come. So our storytimes as an example, I've, I've seen them here in Richmond Hill, but what a great way for young kids to engage in a meaningful, a meaningful environment with other families and other kids and top quality storytime reading. STEM programming, we follow the STEM programming methodology, which are the skills that young kids are going to need in the future without a doubt. So we have professionals that develop these types of programs and you can come to the library and take advantage of all these, you know, for free. It's not free. There is a cost to it and I'll talk about that in a minute, but, but it's an amazing place for, for you to learn and come and come together and learn. So we have our summer reading program as well, encouraging young kids to read throughout the summer. You know, there's one thing I'm looking at here. It's called Magic Carpet. It's from Sensory Guru, its company. And it's a, it's a device that projects interactive images on the floor or other areas. And it's really a learning tool for kids. So I'm looking into that and providing that here at, at Richmond Hill Public Library. In the end, for the children, it's an awesome place to hang out. For teens even more, when I was a young teen, boy, I didn't go to the library or I said I was going and then I didn't. But now teens go to libraries. Where else can you gather, you know, and, and enjoy the social aspects of being a teen and as well learn? I think being teens in this day and age is a lot harder than it's been in a long time. But, but where else could you send your kids in a safe environment? Starting in a couple hours at five o'clock, we open our doors until midnight for the study season and we'll have so many teens in that building. It's, it's a nice place for our parents to know their teen is hanging out in. So the socializing aspect is really important. I talk about this so much. People need people, teens need to be around other teens. They can't spend all their time on Facebook and all these things. So they can come together and use our service in a meaningful way and engage with other people. And they do that. They do that. They study, but they're also doing the things that young teens should be doing socially. We have a product called Brain Fuse. And the, the quote I said earlier, I didn't make, I didn't continue it on, but of the student, he said, "Brain freeze, brain fuse, brain freeze, sorry, saved my life because he was able to really do well in school because he had live tutoring through the library", which is amazing. And as I mentioned, tonight, it's going to be a madhouse there at Central and Oakridges and it'll be that way, I think, through into the end of December. So for adults, let's talk about adults for a second. These young adults here, this was called the Creator Camp, 40 emerging digital creators. I don't know what digital creators do, but, but it's the jobs of today. So public libraries are also essential to, to adults as they navigate their world. So we have programs in financial literacy, we have tax programs, people I see now running their small business in a public library, if only to be not in, in the environment of their home. So they come and they set up shop and they run a small business. Or in the era of people working from home, people can work in a library and work from home and it's another place where you can be around other people. So many times I've done surveys and people come to a library, not because they necessarily need to interact, but just because they need to be around people. So that's another opportunity. We've, we have something called LinkedIn Learning, which I'd like to talk to the BIA about off, off, off camera here. But it's a tool that provides learning for an immense number of, you name it, learning on anything, that you can get really high quality learning on any topic. So people can self-learn. And the one, last thing I was going to talk about is T-Somalia. We have a T-Somalia program at Richmond Hill Public Library. Now I can go down, we all could go down if we wanted, to a downtown Toronto hotel for 150 bucks, engage with the T-Somalia. Or you can do it at no cost at Richmond Hill Public Library. So the breadth of things that we do for adults, I think, is pretty spectacular. That lady that just went back, they're candle making in that previous picture. So older adults, older adults, a lot of the times they're living in smaller quarters, right? So I really think about them and the library as their living room. So people, older adults can come over and enjoy socializing, enjoy reading the paper and engaging with others as a way to, to live their lives and enjoy their lives. But social engagement is really important for older adults. And I'm going to, in a few slides down here, I'm going to talk a little bit about loneliness. So we have a visual library service where we actually go out and, and provide materials to people out in the community. And, and that individual, the number of times that that individual has been asked, come in for tea, kind of, right? So it's really a nice way to engage with, with our older community too. And as well, we have a program where teens help the older folks with computer learning, which I think is remarkable. And what is remarkable, because I've seen this, is that the teens, I think, get just as much out of it as the, as the older adults. And one other thing I'm looking at, we have VR, virtual reality, or, or, sorry, Richmond Hill Public Library. And there's some research right now going on about VR for older adults and, and a way to combat Alzheimer's. So I'm looking at that too. So that just shows the amount of things that, that the audience of older adults can come and enjoy at Richmond Hill Public Library. Newcomers, always newcomers, libraries are the first stop for newcomers. Libraries are the safe spaces where newcomers can come and engage and you figure out how it is that they're going to manage living in these new communities. We have an English language learning cafe, which I've been told over the next three or four times this year is totally full. Mayor is attending one of them on December the 10th, I know that. We also work with the Welcome Centre on one-on-one settlement support as well. So there you go for newcomers as well. That's just a scratch of the surface of what we do, just to give you quick highlights. But we're, you know, if you're one or you're 100, there's something that, that you have at Aurora, Richmond Hill Public Library. I apologize for my Aurora comments on occasion. Okay, so highlights. So Mona mentioned some of these things. So Library of Things is a new way for us to lend materials out to the community. We just started it and it's doing very well. She mentioned a few of the things and then I'm going to mention a few more like pickleball sets or carpet cleaners. I thought you can only get those at the local grocery store, but you can get them at your public library and clean your carpet. Who would have thought? And as well, karaoke machines, which is kind of a neat opportunity. So we talked about our, our new branches, express branches at Sackfield Arena and Elgin West Community Center. Really cool way to engage areas of the community where we don't have the kind of service levels that we'd like. You open up the door, you take a book out, it's registered to your account and then when you put it back in, it registers back to your account. So these are opportunities for us to engage in different areas of Richmond Hill. What I want, what I was working on down in Aurora was also trying to get one at the, the metro links of the ghost stations too. So I'm not sure what that environment is like here, but, but I think that would be a really neat place for them too. So technology, Mona mentioned this as well, our new kind of more intuitive catalog. So simplified search, you can now place a hold with one click, the less clicks, the better as always. And we have an approved event calendar, which gets you more quickly to what's going on and what we're doing. You can review titles easier. Mostly, mostly it's just a much more intuitive design. Some of the things down the road, hopefully we'll be able to do with your iPhones or your Androids, is, you know, take out a book in the shelves by using the apps to check out materials there. Not, not today, but soon. This is one of my favorite pictures of the whole deck, this young lady. They're called touch tables. I was down in ALA Conference in the United States there and this was all the rage. So there's like 50 or 60 different games you can put on these and gauge young kids right in our, in our teen area, or not teen area, sorry, children's area in Central and in Oakridges. I was playing on it and it's actually, it's pretty cool. 2025, Makerspace. So we have a bit of work to do on Makerspace, but it's going to launch early this year in Central. Makerspace is, is a place for people to be creative and, and a place where they can't go any other place and have access to 3D printers and sewing machines and laser cutters and crickets and virtual reality and robotics and setting up podcasting for people, which is very popular as well as video production. So I mean, I've, I've been working with these spaces for a long time and my gosh, they're very popular. So I can't wait till we open ours up in Central and that is, I think it's January or February of this year, or sorry, of next year. So that big, I think it's like a castle or something in the children's area in Central. It's, I think we could make it a bit more engaging than that or do something there. So we're redesigning that space down there to be more engaging for young children. I hope to have more boys out there for them to just have active play. But that, that thing there, I'm not so sure. I'm sure it has history, but I'm not so sure that, that it's as useful to the young kids. That's just my opinion. Study pods, you see these study pods in a lot of places out in, in kind of the retail environment too. I've seen them in hotels. So it's a quiet enclosed space where people can study in, in a more deliberate and private environment. So we're going to have, I believe, two or three of those at Central and that will be coming, I don't know the timeframe, but I believe it's the early part of, of 2025. Experiences passes. So now we have these, this ability to go mutually beneficial on each side. We apply the passes, we have the passes that we lend out, just like any other collection. And then people go get to see the McMichael Canadian Art Collection or through Ontario Parks or the ROM, as this picture is here, or Village of Black Creek, or just recently, in fact, just in the past couple of days, AgaCon. So, so it's a very successful program and the ability for people to explore, to explore art and culture and we think that's great at, at no cost to them. So I think, I don't think I know, and I've been thinking about this for a long time. I think we libraries have a huge role to play in artificial intelligence. You know, we're the purveyors of information, the gatekeepers of information. We always have been. And now people are, you know, it was a news story just yesterday about deep fakes and they were using, I believe, an immigration lawyer to provide messages that suggest that you need to come and give us a lot of money related to this permanent resident target that the, that the government is looking at. We have a big role to play there. We're navigating through that in 2025 to see what that looks like. But people are going to need us more than ever to get, navigate what's true information, what's real information. That's always been what we do, but now in a world of disinformation and, and less than accurate information, we become that much more important, which is why I say we continue to be an entity that's more important than it ever has been in, in any, in any community in particular here in Richmond, in Richmond Hill. So this is a study that was done by the Canadian Urban Institute in conjunction with CULC. So CULC is the Canadian Urban Library Council. It is the 50 largest libraries in Canada, including this one. We meet on a regular basis and we provided a lot of the data for this. So it's, it talks about a lot of things, but what I wanted to talk about, given we're in kind of talking about budget, is what, excuse me, one of the outcomes. And that is that for every $1 invested in Canadian urban libraries, Richmond Hill Public Library included, $6 is generated in community economic impact, which is a return over 600%. Now, so there's a detailed methodology there. Oh my gosh. Okay, detailed methodology. So am I done or can I keep on going?
That's a one-minute warning, but if you need to go a minute or two over, that's fine. I don't think we're going to have any problems.
I've been, I always get beeped, right? Okay, anyway, I'll move on quickly. So I want to talk quickly about loneliness and how libraries are an antidote for loneliness or maybe a conduit to forget, to totogetherness, right? People need people and libraries is an awesome place where you can meet people and make connections. There's a couple remarkable slides. This is from the Toronto Foundation about how often people are lonely and that being lonely is, is having, smoking 15 cigarettes a day is not as bad for you as feeling lonely. So we are a place where people don't feel lonely. And how do you put a price on that when someone is lonely and then they come to a library and around other people and aren't lonely anymore? I think that's pretty remarkable. $58 is what the tax burden is for residents here for their public library. I'm going to put a value calculator on our website. If you take out three or four books, sorry, I don't move, I'm not moving the slides across. If you take out three or four books and take in one program, you've, you've used 58 bucks and that's, and you have the rest of the year at no tax costs. So operating budget, I'll go through the expense line there. So we're, we have the same constraints that, that other departments, that, that the departments of the city had in terms of COLA benefit increases, step increases. So you see a notable increase there. We did the best we could. So we understand that it's, that times are challenging. So we reduced our collections budget as best we could. And then we reduced some IT contracts and we did a little bit of belt tightening in terms of office supplies. And we do our best, you know, we have a provincial grant and we have some money from the school board that we bring in and a little bit of library generated revenue. Anyway, the number there is 9.5, but that doesn't account for, as we flip the page, it doesn't account for the reserve, the special purposes reserve. So in fact, let me go ahead one slide here just to be quick. The special purposes reserve on the next page here is something that we became reliant on over the years. It was populated, I think it, it got notably populated during the pandemic, like a lot of similar reserve funds are. But it became, we became dependent on it. We relied on it to do our operations, which is certainly unsustainable, absolutely. And, and I worked with, with the, the city staff, ELT and GG and, and, you know, I was watching on the fifth and, you know, it's complex municipal financing, but, but there is a way and GG found that to, to remove that $516 drag on us so that we can start fresh next year, clean next year. And I'm very happy, very pleased and very thankful that the town staff took it upon themselves to help us in that regard. Okay, let me just see what else I want to talk about while I have a minute. So the collective bargaining, we are almost done, collective bargaining. And we just have, we have to go to our board, but we should be finished collective bargaining in a positive way shortly and the COLA that we were, the COLA estimates were, were in line. So if you take out the, the special reserve fund, then that 9.5 that you see, which I'd love to be able to get 9.5 every year, but that's, that's not the norm. It ends up being 3.7% if you take that out. And that is what, what was asked of, of city departments as well as us to be under 4%. So we're really happy that we were able to get under 4%. I'm going to leave you with a quick message in that I think really, so the levy that we're looking for, the requisition is, you know, a bit more 9.7 million and, and change. And I, you know, I've been doing this for a long time and I think that's, you know, that's a deal for you guys for what you get in return, for what we do on behalf of all the residents of Richmond Hill. So I hope you think and, and consider all I said and, and support, support Richmond Hill Public Library. I'm going to leave you with one quote and that is that, this is a friend of mine who I went to school with down at Syracuse University. Bad libraries build collections, good libraries build services, great libraries build communities. So thank you very much. I'm sorry I sped up there at the end, but I always seem to go over. And we're done and we're happy to answer your questions.
No, thank you very much. I don't think anyone has a problem with the extra time. There's a lot going on at our libraries and thank you for enlightening us.
I should have said 25 minutes.
Okay. So members of committee, you want to start off again, Carol Davidson, Counselor Davidson, go ahead.
I always wait so I'm not the mic hog, but you guys, it's so easy to beat you. Anyway, through
You're fast.
Anyway, through the chair. I want to say thank you to both of you. This is your Mona just became, I'm on the library board, she just became our new board member. You act like you've been here all along. Thank you. And thank you, Bruce, our new CEO. I feel like even though you've only been here a short time, you have a complete handle on what this library is and what it can be. For folks, that was a lot of numbers and things went by really fast and the board did have a much more detailed, greater opportunity to understand. But can you tell us why this one time nine, 6% has to go to fix sort of this reserve fund? Can you sort of simplify and explain why this is going to, or maybe staff want to, but why does this fix the problem?
So this reserve fund has been around, the special reserve fund, sorry, through the chair to the counselor. It's been around for a long time and just like I've seen others, it got really fat. I don't know where it happened that there became an operating dependence on it. There was some, something that went on. I know that we stopped taking fines at some point, which may have been a drag on that reserve, but at some point it flipped into necessity, kind of, right? So we were drawing on that with an understanding that it was going to draw down past zero. So the 516 is kind of cleaning the slate. But, you know, it's possible that Gigi or maybe Haley may have a little bit more prior to me knowledge, but, you know, it was, it got large during COVID, I imagine. And then maybe with wide eyes, it wasn't used maybe as it might have been, right? And then we landed in the situation, the situation was going on for three years. So certainly, you know, from a library perspective, damaging in that, you know, we're operating in, you know, soon to be an unsustainable fashion, right? So the fix, I don't need to thank staff anymore, but the fix was amazing. But there may be more context on the history of it, but that's what I can tell you.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm asking in a very simplified sentence, why this is, like you said yourself, you won't be back here asking for nine and a half next year because this is going to fix the problem.
Yes.
How, how does it fix the problem in a very simple way and what happens to that reserve fund moving forward?
So the reserve fund will behave in a normal reserve and capacity. There's still a balance there, but I believe next year I would have had to draw on that fund and wiped it out for operations, for day to day operations, which is, like I said, totally unsustainable. So the fix is that I can operate on in a normal capacity where I'm not dependent on something for my day to day operation. So that's the big word, right?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, can you explain to us a little bit? I know independence is paramount for libraries, but tell us a little bit about the relationship you're working with the city or forging with the city. How does the city help so that we know the city budgets, your budgets, what everybody wants, big picture, that for the taxpayers, how's that relationship and how do you work with it?
So relationships through the chair to the council. The relationships between libraries and cities have been interesting over the course of a lifetime. The fact that there is an autonomy and that we have a board and that I report to a board is the reality of it. But I don't operate like that. As I said in my opening salvo, I believe that we're the best partner of the city and I operate in that fashion. And so ways in which we can work with the city, the fact that I have a couple of other hoops to jump through, as it were, is what it is and I'm used to that, but it doesn't stop at all the ability to work together. And a lot of the times, I think libraries and cities have just missed that narrative and missed that understanding. I mean, I was at Tracy's meeting this morning and I said, often when I come to a new city or town, the first thing they do is ask me to, you know, repair a relationship with the city. So at that meeting with Tracy, and I'll tell all of you here today, is that mutually beneficial relationships with cities and libraries where we work together, where we can use our collective good, in the end, you know, it's all the same money, but if we collectively can take a dollar and give $2 back together, back instead, then that's what we should do. So I've navigated that change in most places I've been and confident that that's going to happen here too and that we're working, firing on all cylinders. And I know in this community, in this government, that being lean is important to you and the same for us. And so I think there's lots of opportunities for us to work together and I'm confident already, as I mentioned in the beginning, from the discussions I had with the ELT group, they're all in, Darlene is all in and her team to work together. And we have some things that we're going to work on, but I'm excited to work on them and then really fire on all cylinders and see where we can go.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I do want to say as a member of the board, this is a bitter pill, this nine, nine and a half percent, it's a bitter pill, but it's a one time thing. And through you, Mr. Chair, I don't know if the Ms. Lee wants to speak to it, but I did feel like all our questions at the board were answered in terms of this really is the best option to clean the slate and start over. Through you, Mr. Chairman, I ask the treasurer, is it, can you, can you say something towards the transparency of your relationship with the library and that this is truly going to put us on a great new footing moving forward, if that's your opinion?
This through the chair to Counselor Davidson. So I do agree, this one time fixes what we would call it would the library's budget back on track without having to rely on transfers from the special purpose reserve, which has been declining over the last three to four years. So it was, the reserve has been established for a number of years, but we have been, or the library has been able to top up that reserve through some of the surpluses during the pandemic. So as a result, the library has also been drawing from the reserve to find some of the day to day operations that the CEO has spoken to. So what we're doing now essentially, it's we're cleaning it up so that moving forward, there's no longer to be, going to be reliant on an unsustainable revenue source.
Thank you. And thank you, those are my questions. I moved this, I moved this motion and I support this budget.
Just received.
Oh, right. Okay, just received.
At this point, and yeah, it's included in the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation. We have a motion on the floor and the next speaker is Deputy Mayor Chang.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Nice to meet you both for the first time, I think. Yeah. Welcome to council chamber. Let me say that the library, public library is always, which new and from what I understand, I did serve in the public library system as a citizen, volunteer for a long time, both here and other city. And so I understand, so I agree that the library is a place welcoming everyone for all ages, regardless of background. So if I could just focus on the slides from, in terms of the order, it's nice to see on the slide three, all this percentage, close to 90% or more. Is that based on the survey that library did?
Yeah.
Maybe that's obvious, but just to confirm.
Through the chair, yeah. 2023 through.
Right. So am I glad to hear that the good things are happening in terms of newcomers, in terms of business. And to that end, my understanding is that unless it been changed, when I last served on the board more than 12 years ago, there is a specialized business database that the library is keeping in the central library and the business librarian maybe still in the service or maybe not. That's just why I try to get a better picture. And the reason I ask that, because we do have in the city economic development, to extend that those resources, the library can be helped facilitate and connected with our economic development team so much better. And it's good for both parties to receive. So through Mr. Chair, I just want to get some confirmation, yeah, nay, continuing, maybe different changes or that kind of thing on the business side of things.
So through the chair to the counselor, absolutely. We have specific, I can't name them right now, but we have notable business oriented databases that aren't just available at Central, available online, wherever you want to get them, which are specifically designed for business. I mentioned LinkedIn Learning, which isn't a database so much as it is a learning tool. The amount of courses you could take on small business and businesses of any kind is endless. You could spend the rest of your life taking courses there.
Thank you. So I guess my takeaway or hopefully take away for this CEO and the chair of the board is there are more opportunities to facilitate and connect with our economic development team in terms of amplifying the resources on both ends for the purpose of promoting economic development for the city and increased uses of the library in more than books and whatever format we're talking about. And moving on, I just want to comment and I find that historical collection is really something that could be further publicized in the central library. And I speak about that because my personal experience has been when I was researching for the Spring Fair history of the city of Richmond Hill, it just is splendid and really vast collection. A quite a number of people don't know, I don't know, maybe many people know, but I thought moving forward, I know we finished everybody in 150 and we're sure, but every year is a history in itself. So perhaps that could be highlighted somewhere sometime. Just a comment, if you want to answer, that's fine.
Say through the chair, yeah, I agree. I mean, we own really the history of Richmond Hill in our public library. We have one individual who knows everything about everything about the history, but I like to be able to make that more publicly available, as you say, and that's digitization projects where we can make it more available.
Right. Thank you. So moving on in the, by the order of the slides, I appreciate the linkage to the mental health and loneliness and I appreciate all that. And I wonder to what extent maybe are you even done? The public library in Richmond has big connection with the Canadian Mental Health Association, York Region Chapter, as well as the York Region Family Services also have a particular action table for Southwest Central Richmond Hill that perhaps if it has already happened, that's great. If it hasn't, then I would strongly encourage the library to look into how better similar to the economic development I was referred early on to amplify that, that connection and resources sharing and so on, so on, in terms of serving within Richmond Hill. Through Mr. Chair, there is a question there.
So, so I don't have, you know, I know we work with various community groups. I will say about Canadian Mental Health Association. So what is really remarkable that we've done previous and I plan to do it here is have us as a point where someone can come in and in a quieter way, gain some expertise from a mental health professional where often it's challenging or people don't want to go into CMHA headquarters. So I'm going to be doing that. I don't know just yet, every community group that we're partnered with, but you can see from the slide deck, I find it very important that we are part of the social wellbeing, including people's mental health and things like loneliness.
Thank you. Yeah, it's just a number of organizations committed base in York Region. We are all working towards, when I say all, because I'm also chairing the York Region Human Services Planning Board, which is where you're trying to help amplify and connect all the resources together. Now, moving, we are here talking about money. Help me understand, among the slides 30 to 33, to be honest, I'd be confused. Particularly on the triangle, we are quite familiar with how the city have been doing that. So the 9.5% increase that you're asking now is contingent upon, depending on whether in fact, I take it the board already agree, but in the end, council or the budget at the city also concur with that one time draw, correct? Otherwise it'll become 3.7.
Yep.
So I wonder, I'm not on the board, what, any contemplation about it could be a phase in rather than one time, take out of the, of the reserve, through the chair? So the question is whether it's have been thought about a phase in kind of transfer rather than one time only?
For me, this problem has been going on for three years. It's very dynamic, sorry, through the chair. So to resolve this in a one time fashion and be done with it, you know, that's what I would love. I would take it in any way, but the city was able to, through this year's budgeting process, able to do that in a one time. And I think that's healthier for me. I mean, it's, you know, it's not the most, it doesn't provide the greatest morale when, you know, I have a staff who know that it's, that we're not being operationally funded. So a one time to get this done from my perspective, absolutely. But if Gigi had said, I'll take 150 over the next three years, I would have taken it. But I think it's better for everybody and I think Gigi concurs. But I don't speak for Gigi.
Through the chair to Deputy Mayor Chang, I definitely do agree with the CEO's perspective. It is a one time reduction in the draw from the reserve that will set us back or set the library's budget back on track. If we imagine, if we're to do it over three years, we'll have that impact next year and the year after. And I think what's important to note also as well, as I'm going to be doing the presentation for the city's portion of the operating budget shortly, we're able to accommodate that within the city's budget this year so that we're able to remove that reliance on the special purpose reserve all at once.
Okay. I would, at this point in time, sort of rely on a professional financial expert on this one, but just I'm reacting from a resident, I'm a taxpayer too. I mean, can you not think about maybe phase in four years, whatever, whatever? I know my time is up, but thank you very much. And I think that the library is going through some changes, technology challenges and so on, so on. And maybe I would touch base offline because I'm also interested in a lot of issues such as the copyright issue, things of that nature, which has nothing to do with money. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for coming and nice meeting both of you here.
And I love to spend that time with you too.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Counselor Thompson.
Well, thank you very much through the chair. I too am also on the library board along with Counselor Liu and Counselor Davidson. And yes, we certainly had an advantage being in the meetings with the board and to have our city staff there as well, explaining all this certainly gave us quite the advantage moving forward. So really that's all my comment is on the budget side. I do want to circle back to Mona's preamble. She was very deliberate in making the phrase of yes, at the library throughout her preamble and which is the new moniker for the, for the library this past year. And it really has become evident through the, through the presentation here, you know, when you look at the Makerspace and you look at the Library of Things and you, other programs, which I can't remember the names of off the top, but absolutely, this is not the library that I grew up with for sure. I mean, this is definitely something that looks at things from all sectors of life. It'll also look at it environmentally. When I look at the Library of Things, for an example, you know, the way that we can now get our hands on items that before we would have, you know, gone to, you know, Home Depot or whatever and bought something that we're only going to use once. And then it sits and, you know, ends up in a landfill at some point or another. Whereas if everybody can go and tap into something like that in one place and it's not costing us not only financially, but not costing the environment as well, just a bonus, just the way that the things are looking here. So those are really my comments. I know they're not really budget related, but I just wanted to throw that in there. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Okay, thank you. So I don't see any other speakers or questions for the presenters. We have a motion on the floor to receive the presentation. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next item is our presentation from Treasurer Gigi Lee. Also a 20 minute presentation and it's basically outlining the 2025 operating budget. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Lee.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the Budget Committee. It's my pleasure to be here today to talk about the 2025 draft operating budget. As you can see on this slide. As you can see on this slide, the operating budget provides for the day to day operations delivered by the city. It's approximately three hundred and fifty-seven million dollars in total. The focus of this presentation will be on the operating budget, including the CAS levy, both funded by taxation. The next presentation will detail the water wastewater and stormwater management budgets funded by user rates. As we've seen on the earlier slide, the operating budget represents approximately sixty-five percent of the overall pie. This slide highlights the various funding sources to support the operating budget. The strategy is always to maximize our available funding sources before we turn to taxes. As shown on the table, the initial outlook for twenty twenty-five was at five point zero four percent compared to the proposed increase of three percent. As part of the budget process, departments are assessing the current year's spending versus budget versus future operating needs, reviewing the city's processes and incorporating savings from efficiencies, as well as maximizing revenues and cost recovery opportunities. We'll see that as a result of those actions that are taken, the base budget is more favorable and a big driver in minimizing the tax impact and the tax rate increase of three percent. The draft operating budget is broken out in the budget categories, as you can see on this chart, indicating the overall levy requirement of four million dollars or three percent tax rate increase. The three percent does exclude the capital asset levy increase. And as you can see on the right hand side of the slide, that is one point five percent. A more detailed look at the makeup of the three percent tax rate increase. Maintaining core business is the foundation of the budget building blocks. It's also where the continuous improvements, savings and efficiencies happen. It represents one point eight five percent of the increase. Next on the block is the annualization, which refers to the full year impact of the staff or initiatives that were approved by council in the previous year. In addition, the legislative mandates and changes are shown in that triangle as well. Last but not least, the growth and enhancements. They include new staffing initiatives as well as the continued phasing of the Public Works Enhancement Program and the addition of the new firefighters. So I'll be able to speak into the detail of those over the next few slides. This shows graphically that maintaining core business consists of the various components. So as you can see, we do have approximately six point three percent increase in personnel, an increase of three point five percent in non-personnel. What's really important to take away on this slide also is that we've worked really hard in identifying some of the revenue as well as cost recovery opportunities. So you see that it's minus point eight point one. So overall, at the bottom is where we show that we're maintaining our core business level, all coming in at a one point nine percent. The full time personnel budget pressures are shown on this table along with the transfers to other funds that are related to the direct or indirect costs from the development planning engineering reviews. This slide and the next highlight the non-personnel budget pressures in this budget with the impact shown in descending order. Casual personnel expenditures are one point three million dollars, followed by a reduction in the use of the remaining safety start agreement funding that's available. In this budget, we have also factored in the removal of the reliance of the library's budget from the special purpose reserve that we just spoke about in the previous presentation. Inflationally, cost escalations across departments through new as well as existing contracts are also shown on the slide, along with increase in the hydro and heating costs. Turning over to revenues, staff have worked on maximizing revenues and cost offered cost recovery opportunities. And as a result, you see some of the revenue streams providing offset to the budget pressures. So overall, with the additional revenues that are included or factored into the budget, the base budget increase is approximately two point five million dollars. As I mentioned earlier, annualization reverse to the full year impact of the staff or initiatives that were approved in the previous year. As shown on this slide here, the tax funded positions that will have a tax impact in twenty twenty-five is approximately two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars or point one nine percent. Also shown on the slide are other positions that were approved as part of the twenty twenty-four budget. These will annualize in twenty twenty-five. However, because they're funded from other sources, there's no tax impact. This slide highlights the legislative changes or the mandates that are not controlled by the city. As you can see, approximately hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars or point one two percent of the tax rate impact is related to minimum wage increases. Also a temporary contract position partially funded by development fees as well as the blue box transition communication costs. Growth and enhancements provide for the same or enhanced levels of service to a growing community. It's inclusive of new staffing requests as well as new programs, offset by the revenues from property assessment growth. It's worth noting that in order to achieve a three percent tax rate increase, staff have had to prioritize some of the staffing needs that are put forward for Budget Committee consideration. Highlighted are the costs of growth and service enhancements, including staffing as well as programs. On the right, we continue to phase in the budget impact for the Public Works Enhancement Program. As we can see on the slide, we're going into year six of an eight year phase in. And also for the firefighters hired in twenty twenty-two, we're going to year three of a five year phase in. Other growth and service enhancements that are not funded by tax, so there will not be any tax impact from these. This slide highlights the annual impact per residential household for a single detached residential property with the current assessed value of one point one million dollars. The city's four point five percent, as you can see on the table, represents a three percent for the operating budget along with a one point five percent for the capital asset sustainability levy. The York Region's four point five five percent represents their operating budget increase, that's their draft budget, of three point five five percent, along with a one percent capital levy. The school board is proposing a zero percent increase for twenty twenty-five. So overall, what we're looking at is that there will be a three point four seven percent or two hundred and eighty-five dollar annual increase for taxation. And that would be between the the city's portion, the region's portion, as well as the school boards. There are a number of reports that are also before the Budget Committee for consideration, including one that was approved at the last Budget Committee relating to the city's IT security program. What we have on the slide, it's also highlighting the other two reports that are on the agenda today. The slide here highlights the updated twenty twenty-five tax rate increase should all recommendations be approved. So what we see at the bottom essentially is that the operating budget increase would be from three percent to three point one nine percent. For next up, so we're here today for the operating budget deliberation. And then after this set of BCW meetings, BCW will be recommending changes to the mayor to be tabled at the December eleventh council meeting. Mr. Chair, that concludes my first presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, members of committee, questions about the presentation? Someone want to move the motion to proceed? Thank you very much, Counselor Silivitz. Other questions or comments? Twenty twenty-five operating budget? We've got Counselor Tree on on virtual. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Sir, Mr. Chair, to our our director, Gigi. Thank you so much for preparing this operation budget. I just have one question. So for the page one, for the operation in total, because in the big slide pie, I see we have, I think so. Apologize, I need to find out page, that's page two. The total is three five seven point one. So in this big pie, I see the water budget, also the storm water budget as well. I do have a question regarding those parts as a whole. Give me a second, let me read this one. Based on the first pie, all the wastewater water storm budget are part of our operation budget. So for our water and the water wastewater, based on the reports, we're going to have an increase of six point eight percentage. For the stormwater budget for next ten years, we reviewed that long time ago. So for the average of twenty twenty-four rates, we'll increase fifty percentage as well, five zero percentage. So are both two items, as I mentioned, why is six point eight percent? Another one is fifty percent are part of this big pie? Or we have separate bill?
I think this question pertains to the next item on on our agenda, is that right? Can we just wait, Counselor Tree, till we get to five point four? Your question relates to the draft rate supported operating budget.
Okay, sure, sure. Okay, I'll hear for next one, if I have a five point four.
Okay. So before I go to the next speaker, I just want to clarify, Counselor Silivitz, you're moving all the staff recommendations here in five point three. Okay.
That's correct. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Chen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you Treasurer and your team, actually, from city manager on and everybody working for the city must have a role to play. Just through you, Mr. Chair, to be absolutely clear. So if my map is right, this proposed budget twenty twenty-five would mean that the city's full time employee complement will be increased by ten new positions, of which six are from the tax based funding. Correct, through Mr. Chair?
Through the chair to Deputy Mayor Chen. That's correct. Ten in total. Nine of them are are full time. One of them is from a conversion.
Right, thank you, because that's the conclusion to come to looking at page thirteen and page fourteen together. Thank you. So the I appreciate the triangle, as I was highlighted to the last presentation library, we're familiar with that by now. So I appreciate that you go by one block at a time. So one of the things here is that the region will be looking twenty twenty-five automatic budget two days, three days from now. So I noted that at the slide number fifteen, we're very much based on there's no change. Okay, that's fine. Okay, got it. So I guess I I don't have other question to ask other than for those full time staffing, full time meaning they are not hiring on contract, but full time, full time is a correct for you, Mr. Chair? On slide thirteen.
Through the chair.
As well as the fourteen, I guess.
Deputy Mayor Chen, that's correct. So these are full time compliments.
Thank you. So opportunities for gapping that kind of thing have been already factored in in this proposed budget is a correct for you, Mr. Chair? When I say gapping, that means potentially you might want to hire someone in March, but maybe the the situation is, I always been told it's very competitive in getting someone, you might not be able to get someone actually by June or September. Has those factors be considered potential gapping? I won't call savings, but that might give us some room in terms of movement within the operating budget. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through the chair to Deputy Mayor Chen. So the assumption in the budget is that these new positions would have a March first twenty twenty-five start date. So any gapping will experience that in twenty twenty-five should the start date of those positions be later than March first.
Yeah, I noted that. That's why I asked the question. So we shoot for March, but it could potential, I'm just saying, we don't know what the market is like. But I keep hearing, as I mentioned, repeating myself, very competitive and so on, so on. We might not get someone until a couple of months or more months later. Okay, so those would be hopefully a year from now or six, nine months from now, may seeing operating surplus. Maybe partly could be the contribution of those gapping factors. Okay, no further questions for you, Mr. Chair, and thank you again, Madame Treasurer and your team and everyone that's working on it. And the, yeah, there are other question, I'll take it offline between now and December eleven. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't see any other speakers for questions. We have a motion on the floor for staff recommendations in item five point three. All in favor? Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, and your your next presentation, Miss Lee, on the twenty twenty-five draft rate supported operating budgets also scheduled for fifteen minutes? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This next presentation will be focused on the water wastewater and stormwater management twenty twenty-five operating budget. At a very high level, these services are funded by user rates, fees or reserve funds, and are not funded by tax or the CAS levy. These budgets also face familiar or similar pressures, including those cost escalations, changes in legislation and the infrastructure funding gap that requires additional funding to save for future infrastructure renewal. The proposed budgets factor in Richmond Hill's operating needs and contribution to the repair and replacement reserve funds. The water wastewater and stormwater financial plans have been approved by council in June and November respectively. They both serve as living documents that guide the city towards long term financial sustainability by continuing to provide for full cost recovery for operating requirements as well as sufficient funds for capital renewals. Taking a look at some of the twenty twenty-four accomplishments. The cell service water billing portal was implemented in January twenty twenty-four, achieving ten percent enrollment in the first ten months. The city has also expanded the AMI or the advanced metering infrastructure to thirty-four collectors now, achieving over seventy percent read success over thirty days. KPIs have been established or key performance indicators have been established and improved data collection in support of the city's maintenance programs. Last but not least, the refined stormwater rate structure was also implemented in April of twenty twenty-four. Looking ahead into twenty twenty-five and some of the priorities. For twenty twenty-five, a number of initiatives will further improve the city's water meter reading capabilities in addition to enhanced functions for the water billing portal, along with implementation of a leak detection system. On the stormwater management side, staff will work on a sustained communication and public education campaign for twenty twenty-five. And that will to focus on what stormwater management is and why funding is required, along with establishing some of the KPIs. These are all aimed to provide added value to the residents and to improve program as well as service delivery. As a requirement of the Safe Drinking Water Act, the financial plan is mandatory for water operations and also encouraged for wastewater operations. The intent of the legislation is for municipalities to identify future revenues and expenditures for capital, operating and reserve funds and project volume usage for at least five years into the future. The financial plan also assesses appropriate rates for full cost recovery. As I mentioned earlier, the financial plan is a living document with useful information that can be used during the annual budget review. And when conditions change, the most current information will be factored into the actual budget process. Highlights of the council approved water wastewater financial plan are shown on the slide. As we can see, user rates are determined by considering all operating as well as capital costs as well as increased revenues. The twenty twenty-five rate proposed is six point eight percent. However, when we look at the the timing of when the rates are effective, it represents a weighted average of six it represents a weighted average of six percent increase, given the rates are effective in April. This slide shows the overview of the water and wastewater budget with explanations on the next slide. It's important to note that the water wastewater budget are self-sustaining. The revenues collect collected from the rates will provide for and offset the expenses with an overall net budget of zero, as you can see at the bottom of that slide. Some of the budget highlights are shown on the slide in the next. As we go from the top to the bottom, we have approximately hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars uh, related to full-time or base personal, personnel impact, related to cost of living adjustments, grade or step changes. We are also seeing a decrease related to insurance premium adjustments. Overall, we're looking at one point one million dollars, uh, which is the third item on the list. It represents the wholesale rate increase from the region. That is the, the purchase of water or services from the region. Next to that, um, we do see a number of transfers that are related. So one is related to the operating fund, so that is to align our resources within each of the budgets. Last but not least, also on that slide, it's, uh, related to the transfer to the water rate stabilization reserve, as well as transfers to the infrastructure reserve as per the financial plan. Taking a look at some of the revenues, so what we're looking at on this slide is some of the changes with respect to that. So over at the very top, we see the changes from the operating fund transfers, as well as from the stormwater fund. Again, that is to align the expenses within the different funds. And as we can see on the note here, it's primarily due to insurance premiums adjustments and also realignment of resource allocations. We are increasing a hundred ninety thousand dollars related to investment income. And what we see here also is the revenue. So with the proposed rate increase related to the retail rate, we do expect to bring in the four point five million dollars in addition, which will help provide for the additional operating costs, as well as the transfers to the reserve funds related to capital. So overall, as we can see at the bottom line, the change is zero. The water and wastewater rates are shown on this slide. It's important to note that the retail rate that we see for Richmond Hill is consists of the wholesale rate, which is the, the purchase of water from the York region at the wholesale percentage or rate. In addition, we also have at Richmond Hill operating, as well as capital infrastructure requirements that are also included in this budget. Turning over to the highlights of the council-approved stormwater financial plan, they're highlighted on this slide. Similar to the water wastewater financial plan, the intent is to recover all stormwater management costs through full-cost recovery. The funding scenario that was approved by council in mid-November provides funding for the city's ten-year stormwater management capital program, utilizing a combination of user rate increases, funding from the Canada Community Building Fund, as well as debt financing to smooth out the rate increases. The rate increase for twenty twenty five is fifty percent, and staff will provide a report on the debt issuance process in twenty twenty five. This highlights the budget for the stormwater management service. And just quickly, I do have two slides that talk about some of the budget highlights. So as we can see on the slide, um, majority of the changes come from the contribution to the operating fund, so that is to phase in the contribution related to stormwater operating costs. We are also, as we saw on the earlier slides, related to water wastewater, adjusting some of the insurance premiums, as well as the resource allocation. And then at the very bottom, you see that transfer, the two million dollar transfer to the reserve fund, and that is to provide for capital needs within the stormwater management service. This slide highlights the, the offset or the revenues that are related to stormwater. This table shows what the twenty twenty five rates would be, uh, per the rate structure that we have. So over to the left are the twenty twenty four rates, and to the right are the twenty twenty five rates with the proposed fifty percent increase. This slide again highlights the total annual impact per residential household. What's different between this one and the previous slide that I showed in the earlier presentation is that now when we look at the total annual impact per residential household, this includes the water and wastewater budget, as well as the stormwater. So overall, we've made some assumptions about the water wastewater usage, as well as an average residential property size with a billable area of about seven thousand square feet. So overall, when we look at the annual impact, we're now looking, um, at a consolidated level, approximately four point one percent, or an overall dollar increase of three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Mr. Chair, that concludes my second presentation.
Thank you very much. Uh, members of committee? Thank you, councillor Silovit.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I will receive this with thanks. Uh, my thanks to our treasurer and all staff who are, um, who are so involved in bringing all of these uh, bu- uh, budget items to our, um, to, to the bench. I had just have one question on slide nine. It's possible to put that up again. I would like to know from you, treasurer Lee, when you look at this slide and it shows you that the York region wholesale rate has not increased from twenty-three to twenty-five at three, three point thirty percent. But then you look at the next column, the Richmond Hill retail amount at twenty twenty five will, will have more than doubled. Can you, can you help me understand that? And can you also give us a, a fulsome explanation that we can give to our residents when they, if they look at that and they say, why? Through you, Mr. Chair.
So, uh, through the chair to councillor Silovit. The York region's wholesale percentage is also based on their water and wastewater financial plan. So I think they're probably in the middle of the, the financial plan that they've approved. So they did approve three point three percent for, I think, seven years or so. Um, whereas in, in Richmond Hill, our, our situation is different. Because our situation, we have to look at what the needs are, or what the, 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 the cost is not just passing through the York region's increase, but at the same time, the cost of operations within Richmond Hill. So in addition to purchasing water at the wholesale rate, we also have our teams in Richmond Hill that are also looking after some of the water wastewater-related operations as well. So we have to make sure that in order to, to have full-cost recovery, we need to make sure that we are covering the, the wholesale increase, as well as the cost of providing the services in Richmond Hill. And I'll add that, um, we did talk about this during the, the, the discussions when we did the financial plan. We also have significant, um, backlog in some of our, our infrastructure renewals, so we need to make sure that we are providing for our capital infrastructure as well. So that's why we're seeing, uh, a higher percentage. It is to, in addition to what we're paying for the York region, uh, we do have other needs and require, uh, and requirements here for operating as well as capital needs.
Thank you, um, mostly, I appreciate that, that's, that's very, uh, it's very helpful. Um, if I may, through you, Mr. Chair, just one, one more question in this regard. Um, is the increase that we see on that, in that column, again, to more than double in two years, does that, does that represent, um, uh, and e- is that equal to how much we are, we are expanding as a city internally, of course, but especially with the, the North Leslie lands and all of that, that, and the Young Street, um, the Young Street, uh, uh, intensification projects, that greater infrastructure is required, greater w- workforce is required. Is that also a part of it? Through you, Mr. Chair?
Through the chair to councillor Silovit, I would say growth definitely attributes to part of that as well, right? So it's the need to provide services to a growing community, as well as additional infrastructure that are now in place that we have to service.
Hmm, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, thank you for your motion, and go to councillor Tree, now you have questions on this.
Okay, thank you so much, I'll go back to this, my first question. So, uh, regarding to the wastewater, stormwater, so we mentioned in our previous slide regarding to the overall operation budget, that's the three percent. So my question here is, for the average six point eight percentage of the water and the wastewater, plus the fifty percentage of the stormwater, are those, are those, uh, increasements are all under that three percent of operation budget increase?
Through the chair to councillor Tree, so no, they are in addition to the three percent. So the three percent relates to the operating budget. And as we saw from the pie earlier, the overall three percent applies to the operating budget, or the sixty-five percent of the pie. And if we go back to slide fifteen, if we can, of this presentation. So what we're seeing here is that under the Richmond Hill column, so that is the three percent related to the operating budget, plus the capital levy. And then two or three columns to the right of that, we have an estimated annual impact for water and wastewater at the six point eight percent. And then over to the right of that, the impact of stormwater management. So overall, we're looking at in addition fifty-four dollars and thirty-two cents for the first one, and then thirty-eight seventy-two for the second, and the combined annual impact of three hundred and seventy-eight.
So, so the total will be four point one percentage. If we include both region, our operation budget, and also the capital budget, plus water wastewater and stormwater, so as overall, so we have around the four point one percentage increase, right?
Through the chair to councillor Tree, that's correct. So this is based on the proposed budget. So as, uh, I believe the deputy mayor mentioned earlier that the region is still going through the budget deliberation. So if, if anything changes, it will also perhaps adjust these numbers slightly. But as of now, these are based on the proposed budget for the city, as well as the region.
Perfect, thank you so much. I have, uh, maybe my last question regarding to the stormwater. Uh, if you look at the slide, I think, the, the stormwater, just bear me for a second, let me find the slide. So regarding to the stormwater portion, my question here is, I think we discussed about the background, or why the reason we raise up fifty percent for the next ten years. And from this report, I did not see very clear dis- descriptions of why city raise up fifty percent. I think so far we know the first is recover all the stormwater management costs through the full-cost coverage rates on the page ten. But if you have more sentences, just put here, uh, because our infrastructure for the stormwater or pond has been around forty years. So in the past ten years, uh, we have really flat rating to pay off, but it did not cost, um, the recovery of maintain the health of our flooding or stormwater system. Uh, so for now, for this term, twenty twenty four, ongoing for next ten years, we will addressing those, uh, maintenance costs. I think this is the one of the root cause we can put into our maybe newsletter or any other documents or mediums to, to demonstrate why they are in the sudden fifty percentage of increase. That is my suggestion. Thank you so much.
Okay, th- thank you councillor Tree, uh, next councillor Shu.
Thank you, sir Chair, uh, just one question on slide, uh, fifteen. Can I clarify one thing? Because, uh, according to the, uh, previous presentation, uh, the city just revised the portion of the city is a three point one nine percent increase instead of three. So if the three point one nine percent plus one point five CAS levy, that should be four point six nine percent, actually. So I just want to clarify, is it four point five or four point six nine, actually, through Mr. Chair?
Through the chair to councillor Shu, so what we're seeing on this table is four point five. So that is based on the, the proposed budget. The reason why we haven't updated this to the four point six nine is because those are agenda items on, for, for the committee's consideration for today. So we will update those numbers once they have been approved or endorsed.
Okay, thank you. That means, um, it should be four point nine, four point six nine, finally. That's the final number for the city's budget.
Through the chair, assuming the other reports are approved, yes.
Okay, thank you so much. That's all about my question, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, councillor Davidson.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, thank you for the presentations. Um, it seems like wastewater charges are a pretty steep curve. Uh, can you explain why? Is it that our, our stormwater management charges kind of new because we're realizing the damages of climate change and maybe they weren't there ten years ago? Can you tell me just briefly the history of stormwater charges? And why it feels like quite a bit of burden is now being placed on taxpayers like all of us and the people we represent? What, what's sort of the history of stormwater charges and why? For me, it feels like it's a pretty heavy burden now, but maybe it's a new thing.
Through the chair to councillor Davidson, so over the years, the stormwater management rate increases and funding have not kept place with the growing needs of the stormwater infrastructure. So, um, we talked about the, the previous financial plan that was done in twenty thirteen, and the recommendations that were made from that financial plan, which involved double-digit annual rate increases. Um, because we, the city has not been keeping up with those, uh, some of those rate changes. We're, we're now looking at a backlog or a large amount of capital infrastructure needs that, that will have to take care of over the next five to six years. So it is a result of some of the, the, the rates not being implemented in the previous year. So we're now having to increase and see the impact of what we see as the fifty percent, and also um, over the next two to three years. That we, we, at the same time, we're also looking at, um, providing funding through, through other sources. So for example, we talked about the three million dollars annual funding from the CCBF, which is the Canada Community Building Fund. So it's all to make sure that we are in the long run, starting from now, able to provide for stormwater management infrastructure and the service in a sustainable manner, and also being mindful of the affordability when it comes to the rates.
Thank you, um, through you, Mr. Chair. So is it, is it fair to say this is sort of, we've kicked the can down the road a few times, um, previous decisions, and now it's time we have to, we have to face it and, and catch up? To, to maintain the integrity of making sure nobody's house gets flooded when there's a big rain?
Through the chair to councillor Davidson, that's accurate.
Thank you. Um, and now, last thing I want to say is, I, I do agree with my colleague councillor Shui, who I think is tweeted, who I think is saying, you know, we need to educate the public why. And I don't know if it's a big deal, because I'm not, I don't know how you print out the bills, but is it a big deal? You do provide a pie chart saying this much goes to the region, this much goes to um, education, this much goes to Richmond Hill. Is, is it in future years possible to put dollar amounts specific to the? Is is it in future years possible to put dollar amounts specific to the that household to say, look at, you know, three thousand bucks is going here, two thousand bucks, whatever it is. I do think that would be helpful, a really sort of simple explanation of where that all that tax money is not just necessarily coming to the city. I would suggest that. And also, I agree, I would take any and all education um, materials and share them with the residents that I can reach to explain all this. So thank you.
I I think our tax bill already has a breakdown when it's sent out, but Ms. Lee, give a answer to that.
Through the chair to councillor Davidson. So we do have an insert that explains uh, some of the those property tax changes, but certainly um, for for the next round, we can certainly look to perhaps simplify and also um, continue to provide the communication and public education.
Good, good. That because I agree. I I think there we could use more education on uh, where proper tax dollars are all are going and what the breakdown is, because all they see is our logo on the on the bill that they receive. So, okay. I don't see any other speakers. We have a motion on the floor. Uh, councillor Silvitz for the staff recommendations here in item five point four, all in favor? Any opposed? Here is unanimously. Okay, very good. So we go to uh, in five point five, there isn't a presentation. We just, uh, we have a request for an increase in cultural grant and Mayor West. Take that one?
Yeah, I'll be happy to move that. And I I would just thank staff for the work that they've done on this. I I actually um, think this is, when I put the motion forward uh, to to take a look at this and and to be able to increase that this cultural grant program without it impacting the tax rate specifically, I think staff has gone above and beyond that uh, and created a situation where we're going to be increasing it without the impact on the tax rate at all, which I think is great. Um, I think the most important part of this equation, though, in my mind is that, and it was identified in the staff report, is that this is an important uh, grant program that really does add a lot of cultural uh, value uh, to our our arts community and to us as residents that get to enjoy the the fruits of of the labors that that we end up giving the recipients grants to produce. Uh, and so and I think we're bringing this to a point where it's it's a uh, a more modernized level and we'll be able to continue to do what we've done in the past plus some. And I think when you combine that with some of the other initiatives that we've got going on, like this new cultural hub in the uh, central core, I think we are moving in the right direction with regard to en- enriching the cultural and artistic landscape of our community. So I thank staff for doing that. And I look forward to the new intakes and the results of of this new and modified program uh, next year. So thanks very much.
Motion on the floor then. Any other speakers? All in favor? Any opposed? Here is again unanimously. Thank you. And one final item regarding economic development mission to Hanover Mess. Somebody want to speak to this item? Move this motion? Uh, okay, you feel free to ask questions. Councillor Davidson.
Thank you, um, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so this is, uh, I have, I have spoken offline to staff and I still wanted to make some questions publicly to ask about this trip that is budgeting twenty five thousand dollars for an event in Germany. Um, if I have that number right, yeah. So my my first question is, I I mean, we've been given the literature that explains that other levels of government, York region, provincial, federal, why? Why can't we just depend on them to help us out and not have to spend the money to go as well?
First off, thanks for the question.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, Anthony Iurlo, director, Richmond Hill Center Economic Development. I think I think it's a good question and uh, it's an important question. So um, there's a couple of things here. One, we've done a considerable amount of work around building uh, our investment attraction strategy and then uh, doing subsector work to identify value proposition. Um, and so uh, the city is trying to be deliberate in communicating that value proposition to uh, the outside world. And so we do partner with uh, federal and provincial uh, and regional partners in order to um, work with them on investment attraction. Some of what we'll be doing in Hanover is meeting with decision makers, both federally and provincially, in order to have them better understand our value proposition. But we will also be identifying specific business leads uh, that we want to target within our subsectors to uh, help them understand why Richmond Hill might be a great place for their business to do business. So our federal and provincial counterparts, they represent the province and the country as a whole. Every community has a slightly different value proposition, slightly different uh, subsectors and sectors that they're pursuing. Uh, and those partners, while they try to sort of um, pursue uh, investments uh, at their scale, aren't going to be able to communicate our specific value proposition and necessarily talk to the specific people that we're going to be looking to get in front of and and engage around the specific type of investment that we're looking to attract in Richmond Hill.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Will you be prearranging meetings? Will the delegations have a set agenda when they get there rather than just walking around and meeting folks?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we absolutely don't walk around and meet folks. That's not how these missions are generally organized. So yes, we're working with federal and provincial partners who are also structuring their own agendas so that we can identify where um, the city might be best represented within their agendas. And then we're also developing our own uh, set of leads contacts um, so that we can carve out a portion that's specific to Richmond Hill. So when we arrive uh, in Hanover, um, we will have a set agenda with very specific targets uh, and meeting scheduled to meet our objectives.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, can you give an example where the city has done outreach like this before, gone to something? Has it ever resulted in in business for Richmond Hill?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so we have done this a handful of times. We haven't been necessarily the most active uh, on the investment attraction side, and that's one of the things that uh, we're looking to uh, to sort of accelerate and get more proactive in our investment attraction work. The last time we were in market would have been twenty sixteen in Israel. Um, that uh, so taking a step back, I mean, these types of missions very rarely end up with investment coming back immediately. You're setting the groundwork, meeting with clients, um, you know, explaining to them the things that Richmond Hill can offer, uh, getting a better understanding of what their expansion plans look like. So that when those decisions uh, happen, you're in a position to then compete for that investment. And so typically, you don't see uh, these missions come back with three or four big wins that you can now present. It's laying the groundwork for things that will happen downstream. And if you take Israel as an example, there were uh, discussions that led to investments, uh, generally small scale investment coming out of the Israel mission, but there were uh, some specific examples of businesses that came here uh, and uh, and started operation coming out of uh, the Israel mission.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, just two more questions. One is, why do we need to send three people? Like, would it be that much cheaper to send two or do we need three? Why?
Through Mr. Chair, I mean, we try to be as as efficient as we can. Uh, so what we've proposed here is what we think would be a reasonable staffing response uh, to deal with an opportunity of this size and scale. But as I mentioned earlier, we're still developing the agenda. Um, and so when we wrote the recommendation for council's consideration, we did allow for some flexibility in the staff uh, contingent that will be at Hanover, depending on what that agenda looks like. And if we can, you know, deliver that with with less staff resources than we would. Uh, but we think realistically, um, a three person contingent from uh, from Richmond Hill is is what we need in order to take full advantage of the opportunity.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I am still, I'm still looking for a mover here. We uh, okay, very good. So that's on the floor. The staff recommendations and Mayor West, want to speak?
Sure, thank you. All right, I I just, um, this is, this is not a staff report that we normally would see on an agenda like this. So I I appreciate this. And and I I think just to provide a bit more context, this is something that we've been uh, working on in some form or another for quite a, quite some time. Uh, it it's obviously very important for a community that wants to grow and wants to develop their economy to get out there and and sell sell their themselves and sell their attributes. And and frankly, in Richmond Hill, I think we have a lot of attributes that are really unique and we have something to offer. But the problem is if the customers per se don't know what you have to sell, they're not going to come and buy your product. And in our case, what we want is uh, you know, companies to be locating here. And we're looking for specific kinds of companies to locate on the lands that we have available for uh, economic development. And those companies are not just every company. They're a very specific targeted group of companies. They're higher tech, they're higher paying jobs. Um, and and their 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 citing criteria would be a little bit more specific than, you know, a a more general type of of company. So the other thing about this particular conference that's important is that we're leveraging the the uh, participation and investment that uh, the region, the province and the federal government are also making in this conference. So this is a bit of an unusual situation. It's not some random conference that we just decided, you know, we would pick. It's it's one that we've already got some of our path laid out for us and we didn't pay for that. Uh, you know, that part of the equation, other levels of government have. So we're taking advantage and leveraging other investments that have been made. Um, I think it's really important also to think about this as strategic networking. And and as you said, Mr. Iurlo, um, you know, being a business owner myself, I mean, I know that every time you talk to somebody and hand them a business card doesn't mean you're necessarily going to have that person as a customer. Um, but the key to networking that that I've always known in in the business that I ran was that, you know, you need to go where your customers are. And it's a much richer environment um, to find clients. And this particular um, initiative is like, instead of going on a trade mission where you go to one city and you try to get to as many of the targets as you can to talk to them, this is like you're going where all the ducks are already on the pond. So it's a much richer environment with the kinds of businesses that we are looking to attract all in one place. So we're going there. The cost may be a little bit higher, but the time that we're going to be spending there uh, will likely be very, very busy and very rich in in real prospects that we can be talking to and developing our network. And I guess the last thing I would say is that, you know, in Richmond Hill, I don't think in the years that I've been on council, we've done as much as other municipalities that have as much to offer as we do uh, to get our name out there and to do trade missions. And I mean, we certainly have done some things and and we have good economic development strategies. But the part that's missing is that we haven't spent as much time outside of our borders uh, looking for those those kinds of of jobs and those kinds of businesses. You know, one of the things, and you know, we're going through the budget right now, one of the things that is uh, you know, one of the challenges that we have here in Richmond Hill is that we don't have a huge amount of land base to support businesses that would pay taxes to take the burden off of our residential tax base. And this type of initiative certainly isn't going to, I mean, I don't want to be unrealistic here. I mean, it's not going to make a world of difference all at one time, but this is the the direction that we want to go to to support uh, our economic tax base that are businesses and are paying taxes that are now then reducing our reliance on residential property taxes. And I, sorry, just one final thing. I said that was the last thing, but I wasn't being truthful on that, I guess. Uh, the one thing I would say is that, um, you know, we have uh, a very highly educated workforce here in Richmond Hill. And I, for one, have been for quite some time uh, very much interested in seeing if we can't match as much as possible and more and more over time the great minds that we have here in Richmond Hill with the great jobs to engage those great minds. We, I I got the chance to visit um, robotics, advanced robotics uh, facility here in Richmond Hill. And actually, they're going to be at Hanover Mess. Um, and quite frankly, that's the kind of business, I mean, there's others too, but that's the kind of business I would celebrate uh, coming to Richmond Hill to uh, you know, provide the really future looking uh, types of jobs and and business activities that uh, will be, you know, looking for in the future. So my time's up, but I'm looking forward to um, to seeing us pass this and and more than that, um, the results for, you know, these kinds of initiatives.
Very good. Okay, councillor Thompson.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, you know, when I, when I look at something like this, and and I get it. People will look at it and and say, well, you know, with technology today, why do we have to meet in person and and so forth? Um, and I I have to go back to a movie that I saw that was called uh, Marshall. And if if people are familiar, they know that the Marshall football team, you know, they died in a a plane crash and then they were trying to rebuild. Uh, but when you're, when you are trying to build something of importance, that's when you do want to meet in person. It's like, you know, if if it was important to you that you were going to go and propose to your wife, well, you're not going to do it over the internet. You're going to do it in person. And so I full, wholeheartedly support that we send staff to do something of this magnitude. Um, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I I don't see any other speakers, so um, we'll take a vote on this last motion, five point six, the staff recommendations, all in favor? Any opposed? Again, that appears to carry unanimously. Uh, thank you very much, uh, members of committee. We have a recommendations for the mayor for his budget all lined up there and all we need is a motion for adjournment. Oh, uh, Mayor West.
Can I just, I just want to clarify something for for committee. Um, so we have been able to accomplish uh, this uh, fairly significant agenda in one meeting. And so I presume, Mr. Clerk, that that means that the meeting that we have scheduled for tomorrow won't be necessary because we've completed our business in this meeting. Is that correct?
Thank you. Through the show that to the mayor, that's correct. Tomorrow's uh, BCW meeting will be canceled.
Okay. So on that note, I just, I do want to thank everybody on this committee, if I may, uh, Mr. Chair, including yourself. Thank you for the work you do, um, for making sure that we were engaged, we asked the questions and we did our homework before this meeting. Um, I think this was, uh, that's excellent and I appreciate that very much. And um, I really do believe that what goes forward from here um, as a result of this process will be a very collaborative budget and and one that I think um, you know, we've all been able to give input on. So thank you to staff and and everybody else as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so that motion for adjournment from councillor Davidson. All in favor? Any opposed? Here is, okay. Uh, thank you, everyone.